And the call to order the special council meeting for CDVS Grand Forks for Tuesday, July 26 is now 5:01. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Rehempel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Bader.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Marz, Brian Larson.
Here. Does the attorney of court. Number one, consider approving the facilities rental agreement addendum between the CDVS Grand Forks and Leighton Broadcasting for the use of a six-center free concert. Mr. Murphy and Reed.
I guess I don't have a whole lot to add other than this is, we've had quite a bit of negotiation on this. I think we are comfortable with the terms of it as it is presented. We still have a couple items outstanding that would be, that are addressed in here, but the numbers we don't have yet, which, well, maybe we did get it today. Reed, did we get the final numbers for the policing and the glass removal for that?
Yeah, so we've had some discussion with Leighton Broadcasting on, you know, just, I think, the right way to plan to charge for the anticipated cost to remove and replace the glass before and after the concert. The way this addendum was initially listed was that we were going to charge them for our actual expenses, including, in the hypothetical world, we break 10 sheets of glass in the process of removing it. And in some discussion back and forth with Leighton, they had some concern about that because there's a large variance in the variable costs that could come with the unknown of that. It'd be our staff removing it, not their staff. They have no control over the potential cost of it. So we came up with, hopefully, what can be an agreeable dollar amount in saying that we estimate the cost, including the potential to have a couple of sheets of glass break, and say that we would charge $3,000 for removal and reinstall. That would be a fixed cost. We're taking a little bit of risk in the city in that we don't know exactly the details of removing this tempered glass. And if we break four sheets, we may be, that's where our risk lies in the city. I'd certainly like to say I hope that we don't have that happen. Let's, I think we're all fast learners, the people that are going to be doing this, and we're going to learn quickly if we break a sheet or two. So that's how we have it proposed. There's an estimate that we had out today that was for $3,000. That was for four staff people, a forklift, the equipment for renting from the Ralph Ingleston Arena, and then covering the cost of two sheets of tempered glass to be able to remove and reinstall. The policing side of it, we provided an estimate to Leighton Broadcasting today of the expected cost of two officers for a three-hour shift to be assigned to the concert. That's still in this agreement, that that would be billed on actual expense, but I provided that estimate to Leighton. We don't, talking with Chief Hedland, don't really anticipate a need for more than two officers. If it did, it would probably arise rather quickly on an on-call basis that night if we had way more people come and buy tickets than what we anticipated. But for all intents and purposes this year, I think that'd be the estimate, and we'd bill for that after the event.
I guess what I'd like to do those two is get a motion first and then a second, then we have more discussion. So. Motion. I'll move by Larson, second by a re-appel. Mr. Murphy, has something else to add?
Yeah, I'd just say, I just want to expand maybe a little bit what Reed had said there is, when we did meet out on site with them, I do understand their concern, like he had said about them not having any control over that and if, if the, we, enough a bunch of pieces of glass get broken or whatever. With that being known, what I thought about on this, or way I look at it is, this is something that we want to get more use out of the Civic Center as well, particularly if we do get a chance to remodel it and we can, and we can hold more of a banter. I think this is something that is beneficial. So I, I'm, I guess I'm okay recommending a certain amount of risk to the council that we might end up, it's possible we could break more sheets and be, and be more costly, I guess we'll see. Then we would, we'd have a good idea of the process. We would have learned how to take them, take them out, put them in, and we would know, depending on how many we broke, whether it's something that we really want to continue to do or not. If it's just really too difficult and we break those and it's, it's so touchy that, you know, if we don't want to do it, it's probably something that we wouldn't want to do in the future. So, and with Reed getting some estimates on what the cost for the replacement glass is, it was actually less than we anticipated. So with that, I thought we can recommend a certain amount of risk to the, to the city. I know Mr. Golstad and I did, I'll say not argue, but we had some back and forth a little bit about whether or not that was a good idea or not. So we did ask that he put in a clause in there stating that if we do find out that it is too difficult to remove it and that we're, we've broken four panes of glass and we've already, you know, we've only tried to remove 10, we could stop it at that point and just say it's just too much, you know, and they wouldn't be able to hold, hold that against us or have any monetary damage if we stopped it because it's just too difficult to remove. So we do have that clause then in that agreement. And so I guess with that, I am comfortable with recommending to the council that we agree to this with that amount of risk.
Thank you, sir. One thing, thank you three for going through this and getting this done and whoever else chipped in. I'm okay with taking on the risk also. I think it's a great event to happen. I think hopefully we can have more. And maybe down the road we'll be doing different things in that arena, even outside, so. But, Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have access to new glass if you do break them? Because we don't want to be stuck with not having any.
Yes, we, so we have a couple of sheets in inventory. We have two sheets, the size glass we're going to remove. We have two on hand in inventory. Contacted the arena supply that we use. They have it on hand in the state of Minnesota right now. So if I needed to order it today, it would ship within a day or two. You know, the worst case scenario would be if they sell out of the size that we need, they would need to cut new glass. It would maybe add a week to the timeframe. The timing of this event, I would still expect we'd be able to have all the glass we need on hand prior to ICE start-up on October 31st.
Okay, and then is that glass, is it glued in at all or is it just framed in?
It's all just framed in, yeah. It's framed in, it's set inside the dasher boards.
Okay.
And then just held with the clips on the top side of it.
Okay, so there's, I mean, there's not like you got to pull anything loose to take a chance to.
No, no.
It's a, the touchy piece of it is that it's, it's very fragile when it's being moved
or bent in any way, and so it's, it's sandwiched in so tight in those boards and between each other that it's just really precise in how you have to be able to set it in and take it out. That's where the risk comes of breaking it is, I've been told that if you even nick a corner on the ledge of the boards or on the cart wrong when you set it down on the storage cart, the whole piece could shatter right, right away. So it's just, it's a really precise movement with the forklift and the people operating to remove it and put it back in.
We have issued a challenge to our, our public work staff over who is the, the best and most precise forklift operator, because that'll be the one that's up there.
But, and then Leighton could also, if they wanted, they could have somebody there kind of observing too to make sure that, you know, that, that your crew isn't being really rough and whatever, doing this job. I mean, they could see how careful and whatever you're trying to be.
Certainly, we've extended that invite to Jared at Leighton, that if they want to have people on-site to watch the process, they're certainly welcome to, but they wouldn't be able to participate in the process, just from a safety standpoint with employees. We want our own employees to be doing it.
Anybody else have anything? I see none. Roll call, please.
Rehempel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Bader.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Entertained a motion adjourned.
Move.
By Johnson, second by Rehempel. Own favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned. See if this one moves faster. Call to order the city council work session for CDVS Grand Forks for Tuesday, July 26. It is now 5:14. City Clerk, place call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Rehempel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Bader.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Marz, Brian Larson.
Here. Does attorney of court. Number one, discussion on federal sub-target projects. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President and the council. So this issue was discussed at the last city council work session, and it was recommended to be brought back for discussion again here tonight. I guess what we're at is we are under the timeline here, not where we really have to make a decision, otherwise we will not meet timelines for this. I do, especially from the MPO and Jerry Cooper here from, here from the MPO, they can answer any questions that we may have about the timeline that they would need for admitting the MTP. If we were to select an alternate project or a combination of the alternate projects, if we were to select that, they are here to speak about the process and the timing of that. So what, I guess what we have before you tonight is we really have, in my opinion, three options that we have. One is if we're going to move forward with the roundabout, we still have the reconsideration of the veto. That is out there. The last official action that the council has taken on that was the vote to try to override the veto, sorry, which did fail. And then the second option is the, would be selecting an alternate project or a combination of alternate projects as presented by our staff. And then third, which would be to take no action and to let one of the others, one of the other three cities that are in our group utilize the, the funding. So with that, I guess I'll take any questions. I will answer any questions that I can about the process for moving forward with the roundabout, for the alternate, or what the ramifications maybe would be if we take no action. However, I will, before I turn that over, I will say the, we don't have it in writing and we don't have it in a guaranteed format, but the indication that we've gotten from the state of Minnesota DOT, which is the entity that oversees and distributes these, the federal sub-target funding, that they are not, they're very, they would be very reluctant to do another swap for another year. So I guess with that being said, I will take any questions or answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Reed though?
I guess I'm leaning more towards option two, not in favor of option one, and I'm not in favor of option three. So we'd have to come up with which, which or how many of these we could do with the funding that we have, right?
Yeah, and that is something that I know a couple council members have expressed a question about that as far as, could we put together a cost, like say, because what we have before you, the, the options that were presented by staff, there's six of them, that they are ranked. They'd asked if, what the costs were for each one of those options so they could maybe pick and choose. The problem that we have with that, and I believe Mr. Stordahl has spoken with a couple of the council members about this, is there's a wide variety of things. For example, like the panel replacements, they're not always uniform size, you know, they're, they're not uniform construction. So it's, it would be very, very difficult and time-consuming to put that together. The recommendation that he put forward is that they are ranked in priority in that we would go down that, that list, one, two, three, until we met the, the spending limits that we have with the, with the federal sub-target funding, just because he said it would take, it would be quite time-consuming to put that together.
What we were told when we met with Jason and Steve Emery was each of those would cost a lot of money, just what you said, to actually flesh them out and get drilled down to a cost, it would be so expensive. If we could get all six or seven or whatever is on that list, you've spent a good deal of money just getting it to that point. Better, just like you're saying, to rank them and then establish costs for the top priorities, and then we'll figure out just exactly how far we can go. You're spending money just to get at the cost of all of them.
Mr. Johnson, go first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just was curious here. Okay, if we go ahead with our second option and whatnot, we still have to have the MPO's permission to do these?
Is this?
So then that they could disqualify, or have they looked into these?
MPOs.
Already?
MPOs looked at these projects. They would qualify for the sub-target dollars. We would have to do some amendment to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And when we do that, we're going to have to, in that amendment, we need to provide kind of a scope of work, an estimated fee for each one of these options. So again, you know, once you select, or once you decide which direction you want to go, you know, kind of based on the priority that was laid out, and not that that can't be switched around a little bit too, but, you know, when Jason and I went out and looked at, this is kind of how we prioritize, just based on need. So as part of that process, you know, that's what we would first start with, is identifying, really, the scope of work and putting together a cost estimate, and then putting that basically in a amendment letter format to the MPO to go through the amendment process.
I guess I would say it is important to note there as well that it still would be up to the MPO Executive Board, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Helfer, it would be up to the MPO Board whether or not to accept an amendment to the MTP. So it's, it's not a guaranteed process because you'd go to the MPO.
Yep.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, I think it's apparent we don't have the votes to override the veto on the roundabout, and so I would support moving forward with these six projects as they're ranked. As David said, you know, let the funding fill in as far as it can go, and that's where we'll draw the line or maybe have a conversation on supplementing with other funds if it makes sense at that time. And so, yeah, I think this is the right thing to do, and hopefully it goes through the MPO Executive Board and we can utilize these sub-target dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Helms?
Thank you. Has anybody been down Fifth Avenue over there by Northdale Oil lately? That road is heaving so bad there, right by Northdale Oil now on this side of Highway Two. It's, I talked to Jason one day and mentioned that we maybe should have a bump sign put up there or something, because if that's not fixed or anything happens to that before beet harvest, we're going to have a lot, a lot of beets laying on the ground right there, I'm afraid. It's a big bump, it needs to, the concrete is heaving so bad there, that's going to be an issue too, so we need to get some signs or something up there, I think, for that.
Maybe, Mr. Emery, you can answer this for me, or maybe Stephanie can answer it for me.
Turn your mic on.
Going through the process here and what they have for schedules, it says, letter has to be sent by July 29th to amend?
I actually addressed that.
Yeah, maybe Stephanie can address that for me.
I mean, I guess start with the July 29th, says on your letter to be amended to them, and then go through the TAC August 10th, your meetings, and then what we're looking at for a process.
Right.
So I just, so everybody knows.
So originally, you're probably referring to this page right here, the MTP. So what we wanted to do is, it's not, if you haven't been through the process before, it's not a black and white process, and we wanted to make it as clear as we could to what the process is. If you went down this route, this is what you would need to do. So that's the first, the top half of the page. The bottom half of the page is just a mock-up timeline. If you follow, if you made a decision at the last meeting, this is the timeline that you would follow, to give you kind of an idea of how, to put it in kind of a real-world context, to kind of give you a better idea. But since that ship has sailed, I did mock up a new one and sent it out to a few people today. So you're more looking at a September 14th for TAC for preliminary than September 21st for Exec Board. And then it goes through a 60-day review process for both cities to review the project. And then either Grand Forks will say that their comprehensive plan needs to be amended, which is a two-month process for them, or it doesn't, and they'll just give you a letter saying we're good. And then, so depending how that goes, if they take the full 60 days, you're looking at November meetings. If they don't, and you get a letter by October 4th, by noon, we can get it on the October TAC and Exec Board meetings, which is October 12th and 19th. Then the next hurdle is the TIP amendment, which then you're, depending on how long things take, is either a November or December meetings. So it's, it's quite, it's a process, and we understand that. But, so I just wanted to make it, that's what that original date came from, is to make it as clear of real-world context, so you know what to do.
I just wanted to make sure that we had the timelines so that we knew what the process, because I figured that was put in the last meeting.
Yep.
To amend the TIP or the STIP, we can do that simultaneously, kind of with the amendment to the MPO, correct? Because that's kind of what we did last year, both the amendment to the STIP and the MTP. We kind of did them simultaneously, and then it.
You can do that, yes.
It stalled out at the executive level, but, okay.
Yep.
Thank you for that clarification. I, I know that going forward, I think this is going to be our best route of using this money, and I think we need to move forward with it. I think we need to look at getting the approval as soon as we can so they start the process. Need to make sure that, hopefully, the MPO and the Executive Board goes with the majority of the council's wishes, that we, what we want to do with this, and hopefully that does carry some weight with them. So I'm in favor of going forward, so. Mr. Bader?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'll pose a question, and I do sit on MPO, but what happens if it hits the roadblock again and MPO doesn't approve it? Then you're going to, then you're committing yourself to option three, because now there's no time to do option one anymore, the roundabout. There's no time to do two, and you're going to lose the money then.
Well, I guess, my understanding, I guess, from the last time when 10th went through, what was the reasoning why it didn't get approved? It was opposed by the two East Grand Forks city council members that sat on that, strongly recommended not to pass it this way.
It was more than just the two. There were Grand Forks individuals before we even had any discussion that were upset with the process. I think even if the two representatives from the council go there and offer support of option two here, I think it's still going to be a hard road on the MPO to get it passed.
I think getting approval from the two council members carries a lot of weight also. I think it shows them, the council of East Grand Forks is who serves on that board, shows in favor of a project that we want to do.
I understand that. But I'm just telling you, the feeling of the board, as I have it, is they're tired of amendments that don't go through the process and the last-minute changes, and they're done with them. They don't want to see them anymore. So even with the weight of the two council members that serve on that, I think they're going to have a hard time getting it passed on the MPO Executive Board.
Okay.
If I could.
Mayor.
Back to the timeline of the possible roundabout, that's, I mean, even if you did a full scramble right now with acquisitions and purchases and utility relocates and right down the line, I don't think we're there. I don't think we can even do it, even if we wanted to. And so this really is our, probably our one chance to improve our community using these dollars. That's how it looks to me.
Yeah, I think with the roundabout, you know, the difficulty we would have too is, you know, we've talked about it for the last six to eight months at our weekly utility meeting about Water and Light has some pretty major electrical equipment over there that needs to be relocated. XL Energy's got gas pay that needs to be relocated. But without any type of commitment from the council, none of those groups have been able to move forward with even planning their work. So if that project was to move forward, I would almost think you'd probably be looking at electric, gas, those utilities would have to locate their stuff next summer, and we'd be probably doing the roundabout construction in 2024.
Best-case scenario. Yeah, best-case scenario.
Right. I mean, you'd have to bid it, you'd have to bid it in 2023, but you wouldn't be able to probably do any construction because of the other utility relocation work that has to take place before that.
On land that we don't own, potentially.
Well, you've had eight years to design this and get everything all in place, to buy the land that you need, to design it, to move any utilities. You've had eight years.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, I was listening very well to Mr. Larson, and there's no way you're going to get a 6-1 override on that veto, and plus, that's, that's just a sunken ship.
Anybody else have anything this time?
I guess, so am I gathering that, is it a consensus of the majority to bring option two forward for approval at the next council meeting?
I think so, sir.
Being, I think, a majority nodding, okay.
Anything else, sir? None, I'll move on. Mr. Murphy, anything else?
Nope, I believe I have my direction.
Move on to number two, consider approval of the safe streets and roads for all programs funding requests.
Thank you, Council President, council members.
I am here to discuss a new grant funding opportunity that the USDOT has put forward. I'll let you know what it is, and then I'll give you kind of my feelings on it. This is a new Safe Streets and Road for All, which is a comprehensive safety plan that they were, are looking at a majority of agencies to start considering, planning for safety for road and pedestrian and transit projects as a whole comprehensively throughout the city. One thing that they do is that they have a grant program that's moving forward that is in two parts. The first one being the Safety Action Plan, and then the second one being the Implementation Plan. And in order to qualify for the Implementation Plan funding, you have to have a comprehensive action plan or safety plan to then qualify for those funds. A majority of the entities in our area do not have said plan at this given time. So we met with Grand Forks and the MPO, and we feel that as, as a community, it would be good for us to move forward and apply for these grant funds. It's an 80/20 split, which means each city would cover 25, well, 50% of the 20%. So if we were to apply for the grant, which we are looking at 500,000 to do said plan, then 400,000 would come from the feds, and then 50 from each individual city. My feelings on this is, is that this is a replacement of the Highway Safety Improvement Program that is currently in place, and that as we move forward, because they state that it has to be updated every five years in order for you to qualify for the Implementation Plan, that while it's discretionary now, in order for us to qualify for any federal funding in the future, I have a feeling that this is going to be another sort of plan that the MPO is going to have to do. Transit right now has, what we have is a transit, it's a PSAP is what it's called, and we have to have planning for transit itself, for a safety plan, and that has come down as a requirement. So I kind of see this as foreshadowing where we're looking at in terms of bike and pedestrian or street and highway. So we've come together, we felt, we've seen one for a county that was a $250,000 study, and it was very limited. It wasn't detailed. Talked about things like, if you have a certain amount of truck traffic, add rumble strips. Or if you have an ADT and you think that there's some concerns or there might have been a crash there at one point in time, consider like adding a turn lane or maybe lighting at that intersection, which we felt was a little generic. We've seen those before. We have a lot of matrix types of studies, but this one would be definitely more detailed in the fact that we would look at specific ADTs or level of service, let's say if we have a level of service on a certain strip of road or at an intersection that's a D or an E. or an E, we know we've had problems there, we know there might be critical crash data or near misses. This would almost be so comprehensive that it would be like doing a intersection control evaluation. So it actually provide us what we would need to do moving forward to make that a safer road segment or intersection. And then we would have that available so as we move forward, we could apply for those funds. It wouldn't just be like a federal aid street or a state aid street. It would be more comprehensive, so it would include more of the city. So it would open us up to different types of funding, like for the HOCS system if we were to wait, or if we were looking at something similar to that, or the river road intersection where it's River Road, 17th, 12th, that kind of where it's a very unique intersection. So we'd be looking at those in a more detailed type of manner. So I guess what I'm asking is if you would be willing to allow me to budget this in my professional services for planning and allow the MPO to apply on behalf of the MPO area, and then if we receive the funding, then that would be something that we would do next year.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Better.
Thank you. Studies that the MPO does, like the land use plan, we pay for our land use plan, Grand Forks pays for their land use plan. If East Grand Forks wants a special study done, we pay for that. This is across the whole area?
It would be.
Or are we going to do a study just on our side of the river and a study on their side of the river?
It would it would be on both sides. It would be the MPO area. So our MPO area would include anything within the flood control structure.
So then I'm not comfortable with 10% share of the cost. Then we need to split it based on population densities.
And that is a possible option. We've never done it before for like our street and highway plan or bike ped. It's always been a 50/50 split. So we I don't know how we would split that up, but it's something that maybe we could consider. We're meeting tomorrow with David Karinko for the city of Grand Forks, and we would have to take it back to his council to see if they would be more willing to do it in terms of population, or I think we've done some based on mileage.
More of the pavement.
Yes, yeah.
So that would make more sense to me.
And we can do that, and so see what kind of a response we get from Grand Forks.
Mr. Johnson.
I've been reading I've been reading through what kind of activities are eligible, and I don't see anything in there about educating the public as to what bike paths are for, you know? I mean, I'm serious. I think a lot of it needs to be addressed. We're dealing with two states, two different laws. Go ahead. Stephanie, take over.
Nancy wants to answer that.
I'll let you take a stab at it.
My understanding is that's more in the implementation part of it. This is the Safety Action Plan, so this will basically, what we're hoping for is like a shopping list of projects so that we can, when grants come available, we can pick it basically out of the plans and put it into a grant application, and that would be one of them is more outreach.
Yeah, and then we wouldn't have to do a specific study for that.
Right.
Road segment. We would already had kind of have that project in place. And with the education part of it, when we even write things like transportation alternative grants, which is a lot of bike routes, bike lanes, sidewalks, those types of things, we always add a non-infrastructure piece to it, which is safe kids if it's around something similar to that, or we've done advertising so that it does include that sort of an education piece to it.
Would this include, let's say, I know it says in your street design or creating safer routes schools and different things, would this include changing or enhancing if we need to look at the bike system, that we could change that and use these funds toward that for?
Yes.
If you have to change.
To make it safer. One example that just popped up was with the railroad closure over by Sacred Heart. Sacred Heart had contacted me and asked about the fact that we do not have a safe routes to school plan for them, which when you do the planning portion out of the study, it was only allowed to be used for public schools. And so because it's a private school, we couldn't do that study. They would have had to have paid for that study independently. However, with this type of a grant, we can look at the bike facilities, we can look at the sidewalks, we can look at the street, we can look at that that railroad crossing to see which, you know, how we can make it safer for everyone there, because all of that would be a part of our transportation system. So that would address those needs without doing a specific sort of an action plan. Same with Riverside Christian, Holy Family. There's a lot of things that haven't been able to be done, local streets, collectors that aren't on our federal aid or stated, they don't qualify for federal funding, but with this type of study, they would qualify then for for more federal assistance. So so that's why it's kind of a good one to start. And like I said, usually when it starts as discretionary and they say you have to have the plan in order to apply for the funding, I see it as not discretionary five years from now. I see it as more of a mandated type of a plan. So we would get ahead of the game, and we would get the 80% of the federal funding, hopefully, if we write the grant and and receive those funds.
And coming in as a joint application is a really strong application. They highly encourage that. So two cities and the MPO coming together will be looked at as very positive.
Mayor.
I know this is more toward pedestrian and bicycle and then multimodal all the way across. How much could this enhance our previous study of Bigland? I know we're relying on some older data when we talk about the Bigland Study. We're bringing up some older data, and that's come into question. Would this in any way supplement that as far as safety at intersections, crash data, any update that would freshen up that data a little bit on our Bigland Road Study?
Yes, yes, we would want that addressed because we would want it to be as up to date of a plan as as we could have, and that's still an issue. Bigland and Reinhardt, Bigland and 13th.
It's on our school routes and everything.
Yep, yep. I mean, that that concern from the public hasn't gone away.
Right.
So so we would definitely want that to be addressed in this new action plan.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
I see none, ma'am.
Thank you for answering my questions, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nancy.
And I will, we'll visit with David and and see if it's something that we can bring forward to the next Tuesday meeting, and if not, then we'll bring it back to the next work session. And and we'll continue, I guess the biggest thing is, is if we can't split it up, should I have Stephanie continue to work towards the application? And then we have until September 15th, so I don't want to hold that up.
We don't want to miss the ship.
No, no, but but we will, we will address the the splitting.
Sure. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number three, review of the outdoor basketball court estimates at Danmar Park.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So sent out for quotes on this project after the work session discussion a couple of months ago, and got two quotes back, one from Carview Concrete Construction, one from Op Construction. We did include in the quote also the access sidewalk from the cul-de-sac on Morgan Place to the playground equipment that would provide some accessibility to help with the ADA requirements to get to that play site. Total price, the low price from Carview Concrete Construction was $19,012.50. After we discussed this at the department head meeting yesterday, Mr. Emery requested that we, if we move forward with Carview Concrete, we require them to use a cast iron ADA panel rather than the polycarb that they quoted. So when we bring this back to the council meeting, if it goes that far, I'll probably bring an updated price along with it for the meeting next week. I would expect it a little higher than this, but probably not significantly. Pretty minor change there. So that's the the price quote side of it. The second piece of this this discussion is the basketball court location within the park itself. I included a site layout that shows two options. Option A, on the west side of the existing playground equipment, and option B, on the east side of the existing playground equipment. There's plenty of space at both locations to be able to make it fit without removing any trees from what we see. The initial thought process was to have it be in the option A location because it's further away from some of the cross traffic that goes on 9th Avenue. But as far as I'm concerned, how it fits in the park and how it's used, I think either options are or either of the two options are are acceptable from the park's use standpoint. So those are the kind of the two discussion points or questions that be ready to answer.
I think, you know, we I met, you were out there actually looking at these, and Mr. Repel and I stopped out there when you were looking at staking both option A and B out. And I think when we're looking at it and you brought up the ADA, how would we do that now that you have it laid out here with the options? I think there's enough space on the option B to the road that there shouldn't be any issues. Me personally, I think that's a good location for it. I guess that's what I would recommend, and I mean, if other people think different, you know, that's.
I wondered about the neighbors. Do they have a preference?
There was one across the street from option B. She came over and entertained us while we were there. She's against it because she said it was going to be too much noise, yet you got a gentleman owns a house two houses down with a basketball hoop there that I'm sure is louder from that than it's going to be from this. The other one's out Clarence's back door, so I kind of like A too, you know?
Ben, go ahead.
Yeah, so in in looking at the space, in discussing it with our neighbors, we prefer option A. There's no trees over there. Option B, there are, I think it's three or four trees. And in looking at that, not to make additional requests to the council in the future, I think we'd like to see like a picnic area over there, maybe have a grill installed over there, and the trees would be good shelter for for something like that if somebody wanted to have like a party over there. But if we put a basketball hoop over there, then if we wanted to, you know, make that request in the future, with option A, there's there's no trees over there to provide any sort of shade.
You thinking amphitheater?
Might just well put a racetrack there.
Mr. Better.
Thank you. Again, I'm not in favor really of any option. If it does go through, I'd prefer option B. Option A, I've got a fence in my backyard, so it's not, I'm not going to see it. There might be basketballs flying over my fence every now and then. The noise is going to be more for us at option A. Option A is also right in that gentleman's front yard. Option B, I like that because of the trees helps curb some of that noise and keep that noise down, may stop the basketballs from going where they shouldn't be going. And so option B just seems like a better option if we're going to go through with it to begin with.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, back to this, back to the cement, what was the, it was like a rebar or screen or what are we talking here?
It'd be a six inch aggregate base with a with rebar in the concrete. The concrete would be five inches thick for the basketball court portion of it.
You lost me with some kind of screen or something you guys were talking about at the very start of this.
Oh, I apologize. On the sidewalk, there'd be a sidewalk going from the street to the playground. There's the panel, when you go from the street onto the sidewalk, there's that little rumble strip.
Yes.
That's what I was talking about there. We'd upgrade it from a plastic one to a cast iron.
Okay, I beg your pardon.
Anybody else have anything, questions? Mr. Elms.
Thank you, Mr. President. Believe it or not, I kind of agree with Clarence. Option B, you can always put, you can always plant more trees if you want to do your deal that you're talking about down the road someday. Trees are easy to put in. I think if we can.
Trees take a long time to grow.
Well, they can plant some pretty good tall trees in here right now. They do it all the time, so it could happen. So I think I'd probably be in favor of B also.
Anybody else have any opinion on option A or B? Mr. Larson.
I would just say I'm happy to see the court going in. I think that's the most important thing, big win for the neighborhood. If it's A or B, you know, it's there's good feedback from the neighbors here, but but this is this is really good for all the basketball families in East Grand Forks. So but it seems like it's a wash. I can see how A is very close to the person's front yard that lives just to the just to the west there. I think their their house kind of faces out, but then I see the point two of the trees. So I don't have a ton to add, I guess. Glad I spoke.
B? Anybody else have anything?
Do we, yeah. How much spading of trees do we do these days?
In the time I've worked here, none.
Okay.
Not that we can't, we just haven't. We've been planting younger maroet trees.
Okay.
We spaded trees in here at City Hall.
Okay.
Yeah, certainly could be something we could look at in our budget process.
I know there's always, yeah, been talk of even owning a tree spade someday, and we could take them from lands that we own, grab a tree and plunk it in for just the cost of the time and and labor. If one could pick up a tree spade economically, you could probably come back here.
Maybe I'll say.
Another employee.
There you go. I think you have your direction.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So if not, we'll move on. If anybody has any other questions or anything before next Tuesday, please reach out to Reed. So, all righty. Moving on, number four, consider arena lease agreement with the independent school district 595. Reed.
Thanks, man, appreciate it. All right, thanks, Mr. President, again, bringing forward a three-year renewal of the agreement with the school district for use of the three ice arenas in town. The first year, this upcoming school year that starts at the start of September would remain the same as it was the previous year, $105,000, and then the subsequent two years, we'd increase it to $110,000 for each of those years. This would line up with, if we're looking at these potential renovations within the arenas, this agreement would carry through, knowing whether or not there was had been a vote for a sales tax in 2024 and what the outcome of that vote was, and and give us a better opportunity to kind of revisit if the arenas are going to be used in different ways going forward. So it puts us in a good place, I believe, to carry through till that timeframe and continue the discussion again then.
Anybody have any questions for Reed?
I have one. Reed, is that is that up or is that the same price? I don't remember.
The the agreement that we had in place for the school year that ended in May was $105,000, so it'd remain the same for the upcoming school year and then increase two years from now.
Anybody else have anything? See none, sir? Appreciate it. Number five, discussion on business registration. Mr. Gordy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The EDAs, one of the things we learned during COVID was that it's important to have a good list to be able to contact our businesses, and the EDA has been talking about this. And we know how many, how much has been imposed on business over the last couple of years, and we have a list. We know that it's not complete. We want to complete it. We'd like, we trust our businesses to be able to give us information about themselves, and it's minimal information we're asking for. What is the name of the business, their mailing address, how do we get in touch with them so we can share information with them? So what the EDA would like to do is to formally create this list, and we'd like all the departments to be able to participate so that it becomes a policy of the city council to work on this list as a voluntary list.
Anybody have any questions?
Nancy brought up one thing yesterday in our department head meeting, that some businesses, if they're going to do this, may ask for a certificate of occupancy, which is not necessary for if you're not doing work, but there's a cost involved if we have to do inspections. That would be similar to what we do with subordinations. That would be similar to what we do with subordinations, where there's a cost involved in putting the work together. So there's a fee involved for that. That would come up separately where we would have to create a, a fee for doing a new certificate of inspection, a certificate of occupancy with any inspections.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gordy? I have one question is, would this not fall already under the EDA purview of doing this?
We think it is. The expansion in here is to request that all the departments provide information to the EDA as opposed to right now where they don't necessarily do that.
So what would be that process? Like this, say it's.
It would be a case of, the way it's set up is for the city administrator just to inform the different departments to provide us with the information.
I mean, are we going to have some type of form that we provide to these businesses or go around to them?
Yes.
And does this purview fall into the city? Or does the EDA go out and do this to have these people fill, fill these forms out that existing businesses? And then this would be part of a packet that when someone comes in and Megan will provide it to them? I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around of where this should lie and who should take care of this and not just pile stuff on to Mr. Murphy or Ms. Megan Nelson.
Council president should do it.
No, the expectation is that the economic, the EDA director would end up doing this and keeping this list. The EDA director, if this is acceptable to the city council, would create the form. The form would be available on our website. The form would be sent to our existing business list and would also be posted such that other businesses can participate and share the information. The only thing that we're asking is when somebody applies for building permit, for example, that the information be shared with the EDA. When somebody applies for water and sets up a water account, the information be shared with the EDA. And that the form will be available online so the businesses can fill that out. So it doesn't have to be done except online. Minimal work for anybody other than the EDA director.
Okay. Just wanted to figure that out. So maybe I'll say anything. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to number six, requests for combination liquor license. Ms. Nelson?
As stated in the RCA, we've, a request came forward for a combination liquor license. The on sale license was already approved at last week's council meeting. And the request is coming forward to see if the council would support a combination license. I know I have in here that they had talked with the alcohol and gambling inspector for our area, and there was a question about if the council would allow them to also serve or sell from an area other than from behind the bar. I spoke with the, was able to speak with the inspector today. And basically, usually off sale with a combination license is sold behind the bar as a convenience factor. And at this point in time, he would work with them. For an off sale license, the state has to do an inspection. So as long as they come into an agreement on where the product would be sold within the license premises, it would, you know, as long as they come to that agreement, that's not something that the council has to decide. The only thing I'm asking is if you would support a combination license.
Anybody have any questions? I see none, Ben.
Good. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Number seven, consider hiring incentives for police department. Mr. Murphy and Chief Edlin.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you guys, if the council has been aware in the news, actually just came out, I think it was in the Star and Tribune either yesterday or today, the city of Morris, Minnesota is closing their police department. They, they were down to the chief of police and one officer, and they were just not having any luck hiring and keeping, keeping the staff. So they are going, it sounds like they're probably going to end up having to be policed by the county. This is an issue that is, that's really becoming a problem throughout the state of Minnesota. The, according to the League of Minnesota Cities, they are estimating 800, roughly 800 or more open positions, openings for police officers to be hired here in the state of Minnesota for the year 2022. And they are thinking there's about 600, a little less than 600 in the pipeline getting trained. And of that 600, not all of them are going to be what you'd call hirable either. So that's going to be a shortage of at least 200, probably 250 officers minimum. So with that, several cities are looking at incentives and ways to entice police officers to apply and to become part of their department. We are in a little bit of a unique situation here as well because we, not only are we further from the metro, like some of the cities that are experiencing problems, we're also right across the river from North Dakota, which has a drastically different process for becoming a police officer than we do here. Here in the state of Minnesota, a police officer has to get the training, get the education, then go through the skills portion of it, kind of like, for a little, not accurate to say really, like, like the academy, but Minnesota has a skills portion where they teach you the defensive driving, those types of things. And then you take the post license to become a licensed police officer, and then you're eligible to be hired as a police officer here in the state of Minnesota. While across the river in North Dakota, you can have a two-year edu, a two-year degree in wide variety of areas and you can get hired to be a police officer there. They will send you to the police academy and you are paid by the entity that has hired you while you're going to the, to the police academy. So it's a, it's a much better deal for new officers or people want to become police officers to, to do the North Dakota route. So we're in a little bit of a double whammy, meaning we're farther away and we are right next door to an entity where it's much easier to become a police officer and you get a, you get a better, it's not as costly to the, to the applicant itself. So we are looking at, doing what some of the other cities have become, have begun to do, working with the league and the LALS. There's really three, three areas that I guess I'm willing to recommend that the council look at. Those are hiring bonuses, retention bonuses, and relocation costs. So I guess with that, what I'm, what I want from the council tonight is to get some initial feedback on the concept of these three items. Any questions, concerns, or comments that you may have? And then let me get those answered and then get direction from the council to work with the chief of police, our employment team, and the union to put together a package that we can recommend to the council for approval that would hopefully not break our bank, that would be acceptable to the, not only to the law enforcement union, but the other unions here as well, because I could see some feedback for that. And more importantly, that we feel would be effective in, in attracting, not only attracting officers to come to the city and work, but to retain the officers that we have. Because we wouldn't maybe want to leave them for hiring bonuses to go somewhere else. And there's also, some of the cities are, are doing what they call like a lateral movement. So if you have so many years here, that they'll bring you in at, at something comparable there, meaning you'd get the, the comparable seniority in your new organization. That is one that we have looked at, but I don't know, I, I see more problems than benefits to that particular one. I, I think that's one that's going to be going away. So, so I guess what I'm asking is just any feedback from the council and then authorization to put together a package to bring forward and hopefully approve.
I know that you put in there that you met with the personnel committee, and I think one of the things, I think Mr. Vedder brought it up, was tuition reimbursement. To look at that, because we had the discussion about hiring bonus and retention bonuses is actually what are the accuracy of that at the end of the day? Because, you know, they're going to be taxed differently. Is this something that we can look at that maybe would be above and beyond what the other ones are looking at doing? Because a lot of them are a bunch of bonuses. You know, maybe that's something we need to maybe take a look at and see if that's even possible. Because I know we'd had the discussion, is that legally possible? Is that something we can do? Because they do go through that program for the two years.
Yes.
So that then, there is some tuition costs that they do not have in Grand Forks or North Dakota. So it's something that maybe we could take a look at and.
I appreciate bringing that up. Yeah.
And then on the other hand, too, on the backend of it, too, if that's, if something we can do and look at and retain, what is the implications on their end for, I guess, tax purposes so we can weigh it out?
I appreciate you bringing that up. My initial checking into that, it does appear that is, that is something that we can structure to do. I, thank you for bringing that up. I, I forgot to put that, I just neglected to put that in, in the RCA, but thanks for bringing that up.
Mr. Larson.
Yeah, thank you. Just kind of building on what Mr. Olsted said about, you know, these incentives with tuition reimbursement. Another potential way to attract and keep police officers here would be to look at maybe helping to offset some of the housing costs. And so if there's a, if there's some potential to help to incentivize and prioritize coming to East Grand Forks, work as a police officer, buy a home here, stay in the community, you know, I think that that's a really good thing. We have a number of lots that we could discuss, but buying your first home, billing up for that down payment, that's a major burden for a lot of people early in their career. And for a police officer starting out, I think that would be a really attractive and maybe unique incentive that East Grand Forks could consider. And I, I'm not familiar with the tax implications of that, but I'm just tossing it out as an idea.
I know some of the cities are looking at relocation expenses for moving to the city. No, that'd be one, I guess I hadn't thought about. I do know some cities are doing things like, like discounts on, on activities, the city activities, like parks and rec things like for their, their kids, those types of things. They're getting discounts for city employees, particularly police officers in that. That is one, I, I guess, in our initial conversation, we thought maybe wouldn't be quite as enticing. I think we wanted to look at ones that maybe would be more likely to get people here. I think it's a nice amenity, but I don't know that somebody's going to move because they get half off this swimming pool in the summer. The, the idea for, the idea for the, for the housing? Yeah. I don't, I'm not sure how that works, but I think that's worth exploring. I appreciate that.
You know, after we met, and I'll get to Mr. Johnson here, I had a thought that I should have brought up then, is there a way we can take our local police officers now, the force that we have, maybe ask them what things that they see, why they stayed here and what meant to them? And I guess there are things that would entice them if they were looking to come here. I know a lot of the officers we do have here are from the area, but it's maybe some of them that maybe have an idea that maybe we could take a, you know, a formal survey from them and some of the discussions we can have from them, I guess.
I have had a number of those conversations. I've sent out emails looking for suggestions from our officers on what they think would be attractive. And the vast majority of the responses I've received are, are money. It's the, historically, our department has, for this region, been relatively well-paid. That gap has closed dramatically in recent years. And that's, that's, you know, there's, there's multitude of factors of, of the low number of people going into law enforcement in general, and then we're obviously struggling here. I'll just, I'll illustrate how difficult it's become for us. In 2021 and 2022, we've now run five processes. We've hired one officer out of those five processes. We had one process last year where we had an officer that from another state that we thought was going to be coming here, just literally found out on Thursday that he is, is not going to be able to come here after all. He's had some family things developed and he and his wife are going to be relocating to where they're originally from rather than coming here. So the one person we thought we were going to get, we're losing out on. So we, in five processes, we've been able to hire one person.
I think there's ways we can look at this, too, is we can look at young professionals coming out of the training, or we can look at a veteran who wants to maybe relocate. I mean, we can have different looks of incentives that way so that we have, can see all the spectrum of, you know, who we're bringing in could be the, you know, brand new out of the education or somebody that's, has some experience that we could bring in here too, which would be great, too. So maybe that's something we need to look at and then gauge of, okay, we have these lists of things that we have for incentives and maybe they're geared towards certain aspects of their years of training and, you know, so, I think they would want, you know, so.
We have had lateral transfers come in. Typically, they've been at step three. The only exception we've done to that is been, it was Justin Rue who had nine years of experience in Kirkston. We did start him at a step four. But as, as Mr. Murphy mentioned, there are a number of agencies that are bringing people in at the level that they're at in their current department. That's, you know, another option, but as he said, there are also issues that are created when you do that.
Mr. Johnson.
Don't get me wrong, I love cops, don't get me wrong, but I want to get Mr. Bush's, what, how is your department doing for, you know, are you listening to this?
And I, I do feel for Chief Edlin because the law enforcement has taken a hit. They're, it's obvious they're having trouble recruiting people and retaining. Fire, we have noticed a downtrend in it as well, not getting as many applicants, but fortunately, we're able to fill our spots.
Okay, because I get worried because that's the two most important things that I know of is fire and PD. I appreciate everyone's go, go, go on it.
Thank you.
And we will be working on this.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're fortunate to live in a community that really supports our, our law enforcement and, and our services. And that's a plus that we probably need to exploit more because there's a lot of officers, I think, that are leaving communities because they don't feel the support of their community. So maybe EDA, if we could wrestle them into developing a program with our businesses that they do, I'll date myself, a welcome packet when you move into the community for our law enforcement, that here's discounts at all these different businesses. And it just doesn't have to be new officers, it can be existing officers also, that they're getting discounts from all these businesses just to show that, you know, we're behind you. Mr. Murphy, you talked about, you know, waiving the park fees or something, that can be part of that packet. There could be a library card in there. There's lots of things that we could do to show that, hey, our community does support officers, and that might be a way to entice more people to move here. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Edlin, you want to address that?
I was just going to comment, and in our last couple of processes, we have tried to, to make it known that our community does support us, and that's greatly, greatly appreciated by our staff. We've done Facebook posts pointing that out, and in the most recent job notification on the post board, I very clearly stated that, you know, come, come work for our community that supports our police department, because we absolutely do have wonderful support from our community and that, that is greatly appreciated by our officers.
Mayor.
Thank you. Just as I, as we were listening, and I think you tried to touch on it also, you know, we're thinking about, you know, repaying student loans, but some of them have been out of school for a while. They are a lateral transfer. They don't have student loans. We talked about a relocation, but maybe we're bringing them in from Grand Forks or they're already living in the area, and they don't need the relocation, and they don't have kids for activities and whatnot. So the thought I had was maybe the incentive is a dollar amount and you can keep it and not have to repay it if you stay with the force for so many months or years, right? So it's, it's money upfront and it's, you, you only have to repay it if you leave within that first year or 18 months or whatever we would decide.
Call it a grant.
Well, and that'd be one way to look at it. Typically, how a hiring bonus would be, would be worked on is you would get like a, a portion of it at three months or six months or something, and then you get the rest of it at, at a year, you know, so rather than.
Yeah.
I do like the idea of, of targeting veterans. The, the problem with that, we'd almost have to have some sort of like scholarship type thing or something along those lines if they're going to need to, unless they're actually licensed in the, in the state of Minnesota. Because the problem we have is even if they're, even if their job in the military was as law, you know, law enforcement in the military, they need to be licensed here in the state of Minnesota. And there is a process even for them to do that, and it, and it can take, take a while. So.
That was more interesting. I was more addressing that to veteran police officers.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand what you're saying, and I would agree, yes, it's a good choice, too, but I was talking more veteran police officers that have years of service.
On the veteran note, to the military veteran front, as the meeting was going on, and I was reviewing my notes and information on this, I actually did write a note to myself that I think the next go around, whenever we start our next process, I think we should actively recruit out at the Grand Forks Air Force Base and perhaps other military institutions in the region, because you can go through, it is, it is time consuming, but military veterans can go through a reciprocity process for the state of Minnesota where they can, don't necessarily have to go, depending on their experience. They don't necessarily have to go through the formal education to be a police officer. They would still, you know, have to, have to go through a variety of steps to get there, but it's worth us looking at, and one more avenue of potential applicants.
Anybody else have any comments, suggestions? I know that, you know, it's something we need to work on, I think, and can figure something out.
All right, thank you.
All right. Entertaining motion adjourned.
Move.
Moved by Johnson. Second by Riappel. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.